February 15, 2023, Planning Commission meeting. It's good to see everybody, Mr. McKinley.
Thank you.
Job well done.
It's good to be back.
I don't know if so you've done you well or not, but you look good.
Thank you.
Okay, glad to see everybody. I'm going to ask Chris if he would give us the implication, and I'd ask John to give us the implication, if you don't mind.
Heavenly Father, you have assured us that with two or more gathered in your name, you're with us. We thank you for all of the mercies and blessings in our lives. Give us the wisdom to make decisions that best serve you and the needs of our community. In Jesus' holy name you pray.
Amen.
Amen.
Garfield's asked me to do the Pledge of Allegiance. I would note that the Pledge of Allegiance as written has a lot fewer comments than we typically use it when we say. So it will be a little bit flow differently. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Stuart, to you, good evening, and would you give us a roll call?
Yes, Mr. Parker. Chris Crowley.
Here.
Edward King. Patrick O'Brien.
Here.
John Cost. Vivian Diggs.
Here.
Garfield Parker.
Here.
Roger McKinley.
Here.
Charles Williams.
Here.
Heidi Wilkins-Cory.
Yeah.
We do have a quarrel.
All right, thank you.
At the last meeting, you all asked me to contact Mr. King, and I tried calling. I have one phone number for him, which is the King Cleaning Service, and I called and it said it was closed due to illness. And so they said they're going to reopen, but I'm sending an email, and I don't know exactly. I don't really have any update on Mr. King.
I have talked to him.
Okay.
Yeah, I talked to him probably maybe a couple of weeks ago. Still real weak, still in a recovery stage. But he was curious about what was going on with the Planning Commission, so as his health will allow, he plans to be back.
Well, if you get in touch with him, his reappointment comes up in March. So I want to know, understand if he doesn't want to be reappointed, but just want to see if we can figure out whether we need to appoint somebody or whether he'd be ready to reopen, and I'll try to continue to contact.
I'm going to sell at work.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll send it to you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We need approval of the agenda from our last meeting. I hope you all have had a chance to reflect on it.
The agenda of the minutes.
The minutes.
Move adoption.
Second.
Moving the property second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Now approval of tonight's minutes. If anybody would like to make any changes.
For the agenda?
For the agenda.
Move to be there, be accepted as written.
Second.
All right, thank you. Any objections? Stand approved. All right. Commissioners' comments. Commissioners' comments. Are we at that point? Or I'm going to turn it over to Stuart.
No, if there's no commission comments, I do have a couple of comments. I sent an email out to all y'all about 4:45 today. I'd just gotten it this afternoon, that Dominion Energy has agreed, and the Board of Supervisors agreed on a date to meet, and they would like to have a joint Planning Commission, Economic Development Commission, and Board of Supervisors, if they could attend, the March 7, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. It's in your email inbox, but I just wanted to let you know that March 7, 2024, here at 6:00 p.m., Dominion Energy is going to be presenting, as we requested. The other thing I wanted to mention, and this is just for the Capital Improvement Subcommittee, Mr. Cost, Ms. Wilkins-Cory, and Mr. Parker. Tentatively scheduled, want to schedule a meeting for the CIP Subcommittee on Wednesday, February 21st. That's next Wednesday. I was thinking about 3:00 p.m. in the afternoon. I don't know if that would work for you. I've not seen if the room is available at the Sheriff's Office yet, but that's what I was shooting for. And if y'all can make that, we can try to reserve it.
I won't be in town.
You won't be in town, okay. Well.
Week after.
Okay, well, according to the schedule, which is accelerated because the Board of Supervisors wants to get the budget done early this year, they want us to have our public hearing on the Capital Improvement Plan in March 21st, at our March 21 meeting. So we're going to have to have two or three meetings, maybe four before then. So really, I think we need to try to do something in February. I'll be back in touch with you all individually, once we firm up the date. But we've gotten all the requests in, and as usual, there are more projects than mine.
Really? That's shocking.
Yeah, exactly. But that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Can we go to the public hearing now?
Yes, sir. Let me go get the sign-in sheet, see if anybody.
Is there anybody, anybody online?
I think we also need this public comment section.
Okay, we'll go back, we'll go back as soon as you come back. Going to open the floor for citizens' comments. If anybody has one. And you can give us your name and where you live.
I'm in Reedville, Virginia. And I came across my desk that there's been several bills going after solar power in localities. Two of them stalled.
One second, I'm going to work that out.
That's good.
Test? Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay, so two of them stalled, but one of them is going to be heard tomorrow morning in Subcommittee. And it's to prohibit a locality from including in ordinance limits on the total amount, density, or size of any ground-mounted solar facility or energy storage facility until such time that the total area under panels within the locality exceeds 4% of the total area within the locality. And it also has any provisions on the use of solar panels that comply with generally accepted national environmental protection and product safety standards, provided that such installation is in compliance with any provisions of a local ordinance that establishes criteria and requirements for citing. And I'm just, I'm a little concerned because I know how much work you all have put into our solar ordinances. And to see General Assembly members coming in with bills to take the power out of our hands. So I noticed that you can make comments or suggest, as Stuart said, suggest to the Board of Supervisors to weigh in on some of these in the comment area. I've noticed that other communities have done the same. Page County has something that would reflect how you probably would all feel about how you've already made ordinances, you've already done all the hard work. Why are you trying to take the power away from us? You don't know what it's like where we live, that kind of thing. So I just wanted to call it to your attention because of all your hard work. Thank you.
Very helpful, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment. Anyone else? Is there anyone online that would like to have a comment? Citizens' comment? Okay. Going to close the citizens' comments portion. Stuart, I didn't give you a chance if you had anything, did I?
No, I did. That was the joint meeting on March 7, and then Subcommittee. But that's all I had.
Okay. All right. Can we go into our public hearing?
Yes, sir. There was no one that signed up, and I have received no correspondence or phone calls or any input whatsoever from any citizen regarding boat canopies.
Is there anyone here tonight in the public that would like to have something to say about our public hearing tonight? Is there? Is there anyone online? Or?
You're bad.
Anybody online that would like to have something to say? They are? Okay. Okay, so we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing and turn it over to the Commission. Okay? Stuart?
Yes, sir. The changes we're proposing is a revision to the Northumberland County zoning ordinance, Section 148-151, boat houses to add the definition for boat canopies at exceptions to Item 5, 6, and 8 that do not apply to boat canopies in order to allow them in Northumberland County. In addition, add boat canopies as a use in the zoning table, usage table, to make them a conditional use in A1 agriculture, C1 conservation, R2 residential waterfront, R3 residential restricted, R4 residential recreational, B1 business, and M1 industrial zoning districts. That basically mimics what the boat houses now are allowed in. So it's just basically paralleling what the boat houses are in. And for the specifics for the ordinance, the definition we're proposing is a metal frame structure with a fabric canopy over a tidal waterway attached to pilings that shelters a boat by complete or partial enclosure. And then the usage is another way to say it. It's everything, all zoning districts except R1, but in the advertisement, I've listed all of them. But basically, it's all zoning district except R1, which again parallels what the boat house, regular boat house ordinance has. And the changes to the actual ordinance itself. I don't know why it's not coming up.
Good honor.
Well, I've never had this happen to me before. See if that'll work.
Opened somewhere already?
I have a hard copy I can read from. I just wanted to show it, to have it available for people to read as well. But I always bring the, there you go. Thank you, sir. So the main language of the boat house stays the same. I mentioned 5, 6, and 8 will change. And we basically just added regarding the building materials. We said, except for boat house canopies private. When it referenced painted, stained, or salt-treated. And then there's another requirement, which Number 6 outlines, which is the roof pitch. And so we put, except for boat house canopies private. And then the final thing was a fire extinguisher within the boat house. We accept for boat house canopies private for that. And since they're made of metal, they should be a little bit less prone to combusting. So those are the changes. We've discussed them before. Like I said, I had no comments, and it seems like everybody's okay with this. So I would make a motion to accept it and send it to the Board.
Well, let me hear from the rest of the Board first. And? Anything?
Perfectly acceptable with me.
Okay.
I'd be glad to make a motion.
Okay. Canopy.
I agree. Let's make a motion.
Okay. So what happens when a boat canopy becomes in disrepair? Who's going to enforce this?
Well, that is why we wanted to make it a conditional use.
Okay.
I mean, the Board could, after speaking with the owner and the owner saying they're not going to do anything, they could rescind the conditional use. I don't know if that's done anytime recently in the near history, but it is an enforcement mechanism that could be used.
Just curious, has anyone around seen any that appear to be in disrepair anywhere around the county?
Well, they're not allowed in the county. So I don't think we have any. I mean, very well could have some, but I'm not aware of any.
Okay. All right. Anybody have anything? Floor is open.
I would like to make a motion that we approve this under the conditions that are stated. I like the idea of having a conditional use permit so they can deal with disrepair and those types of things at the Board level. So I would like to make that motion that we approve that.
Second.
It's been moving the property second, that this motion be accepted. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It passes. All right. It was easier than I thought. I thought you were going to give a little more detail.
Did you vote, Mr. Williams, or did you abstain?
I'm sorry.
Did you vote, or?
I did vote this time.
Okay, okay. Just wanted to make sure. I knew last time you abstained.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the next item we have is the annual report, or end-of-the-year report. And I mean, I sent it out to y'all last week, so hopefully y'all have time to read it. I was not going to go through all of it, but I'll go try to hit the highlights, if that's okay with you, Chairman.
That's all right with me, as long as it's a question.
If you recall, we dealt with travel trailers and camping, and as well as looked at whether service stations should be by right in B1. Also, we dealt with short-term rentals and recommended to the Board that R3 zone to land in the county where there are very small lots, and there are no homeowners association that short-term rentals are a conditional use. We reviewed the county parcels, a total of 79 properties of the county owned, and recommended the Board investigate selling five of them. We worked on the battery storage ordinance, but we're kind of holding that for, after we get the solar done. We started reviewing the zoning ordinance usage table, and we'll continue that tonight and hopefully finish that in the next couple of meetings, as well as boat canopies. And then we worked again, I think it was the third or fourth review of the solar ordinance in light of our joint meeting with the Rural Solar Development Coalition meeting that we had with the Joint Supervisors. And in addition, we had adopted, well, recommended for adoption, the Capital Improvement Plan back in April 20, 2023, and we'll be doing that again this year. And I think one of the big feathers in our cap is that we got the canoe and kayak launch built underneath the bridge next to the Great Waukamiko fishing pier, and that's available for citizens to use. The Board requests, basically, it's similar to other years, slight variations in the boat house requests and Chesapeake Bay Act, variances in conditional use permits. The big, big thing, of course, everybody looks at is the total construction. The cost of construction was $59,793,853 this year, which was compared to $60 million last year. So it's very much a little bit below. It's 0.37% below from last year, but it's not really significantly significant change, or we're pretty much.
Interest rates are triple what they were last year.
Right. We're not going up, but we're not going down. We're pretty much holding even. There were 53 single-family dwellings built, I'm sorry, 54 single-family dwellings built in 2023, 17 modulars, eight double wides, seven mobile homes, and eight commercial structures. Back, I guess, two or three years ago, maybe 2020, you all wanted a better picture of the commercial activity because the table that says there are eight commercial constructions, that is new construction. It does not take into account remodel, repair. So we have sanctioned out the remodel, repair. And this year was $1.3 million of remodel, repair, up from $705,000 in 2022, which is an 86.2% increase.
The percentage of all that is dollar stores.
Some of it, yeah, definitely. And the number of dwellings is pretty much the same. If you look at the graph there, it's one dwelling less than last year. The breakdown in the Magisterial Districts. Fairfield has most of the dwellings and most of mobile homes, modular homes, and things of that nature. Heesville had 15, Lottsburg had 15, and I'm not following along over here, I'm sorry. So basically, Fairfield District had most of it, and then Lottsburg and Heesville, Waukamiko, well, they had development, but just not as much. The zoning districts. Agriculture had 22 new constructions. Residential had four. Of course, residential waterfront, which is where everyone wants to live, had the highest at 55. Four in R3 residential restricted, two in R4, two in conservation, two in business, and two in industrial, three in industrial. The rest of the report talks about building zoning, our inspections, mechanical permits, but we had 393 building permits, 271 mechanical permits, and 411 electrical permits, 190 plumbing permits, and approximately 2,929 building inspections. The last section is wetland permits and boat houses. There were 11 boat houses, and they were spread out amongst the creeks. There were 27 private piers in the Potomac and 33 on the Chesapeake Bay, and that's the watershed, the entire watershed. So you got the individual creeks in here as well. The last section is wetland application permitted. That can be anywhere from shoreline restoration to oyster floats to osprey poles. So there were 36 in the Potomac River and 33 in the Chesapeake. So that is the annual report. If you have any other questions, I'd be glad to answer them, the best to my knowledge.
Just one quick, land disturbing inspections. What is that again?
That's when, well, land disturbing, yeah, that's basically looking to make sure the silt fences are in, that when you have to put silt fences in when you construct over a certain area of disturbed land to keep the soil in place, and then revegetate that once the construction's done. So you have to check to make sure that the vegetation, the grass.
That went up close to 50, 48, or something like that. Is that right?
I'm sorry?
Those inspections, the previous year was 208, and this year is 256.
Yes, sir, and there are a few more permits. If you look below the land disturbing permits, they're kind of tied together because the permits are what you inspect.
Okay.
And these are approximations. I mean, we didn't log every one, but we basically did a percentage of them.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Are there any other questions about the end-of-the-year report?
Since that's my first cycle, who's the audience for that? Public Board Supervisors, anybody?
Anybody, I guess. The Economic Development Commission, you know, just a gauge of the economy and, I guess, demand for new housing and construction trends. Trying to look for trends. But I knew the newspapers interested in that, and it kind of just gives an indication of whether we're going up or going down.
So can you formally transmit this to Karen and the Economic Development Commission? Because you're right, that would be very interesting to them.
Well, see, this is draft.
Oh.
We recommend the Board adopt it. And so basically, it's draft, and I asked the reporters if they could hold off reporting until it's presented to the Board of Supervisors, which I'll be doing at the next month's meeting.
Excellent, good to know, thank you.
So from what you have presented, are we where we were last year? Or are we?
Well, we're slightly below. I mean, if you just look at total construction cost, it's just slightly low. And as Mr. Cost, you know, as mentioned, everything is more expensive now, and loans are more expensive, and building materials as well. So I, I mean, I'm not a statistician, but I don't think we're pretty much even with last year. It's my opinion.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
No actions required at this time?
I mean, we, I don't think we need to make a motion, no, sir. I don't think so.
All right, sounds good to me. Okay. All right. Any questions from the Board? Any other questions concerning the end-of-the-year report? All right. Okay, Stuart?
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the usage table review. The Board of Supervisors requested that we, let me get the language here. Review any and all uses in all zones within the zoning ordinance to determine if certain uses should be allowed by right, conditional use, or not at all based on the definitions of the zoning district and the comprehensive plan. We have worked on this before, and we worked on the first page. But I would like to do like I did last time and just outline the purposes of each district before we start so we can kind of keep that in the back of our mind. And if you don't mind, I'll just go ahead and read the, I did not, I sent them out last year, but I'll go ahead and read the. This district, I'm sorry, Conservation District, which is C1. This district covers portions of the county which are occupied by various open uses, such as forest parks, farms, lakes, marshlands, and wetlands. This district is established for the specific purpose of conserving open space, forest, water, and other natural resources, reducing soil erosion, protecting watersheds, and reducing hazards from flood and fire. Use is not consistent with the existing character of this district or with the provisions of any other law, state, or federal applicable to these portions of the county are not permitted. And that was C1 Conservation District. A1 Agricultural District. This district covers portions of the county which are occupied by various open uses, including farms, orchards, vineyards, forests, and parks. This district is established for the specific purpose of facilitating existing and future farming and forestry operations, conserving water and other natural resources, reducing soil erosion, protecting watersheds, and reducing hazards from flood and fire. To ensure that excessively above goals is necessary to maintain as low a density of residential development as is reasonable. The character of this district should remain agricultural in nature with residential industry or small commercial businesses permitted only when it will benefit the median area without degrading the environment. R1 Residential General. The purpose of this district is to promote and encourage a suitable environment for family life compatible with low intensity of land use. Its district is comprised of low to median concentrations of residential uses plus certain open areas where similar development appears likely to occur. Certain commercial, public, semi-public, and institutional uses of a character that complements residential communities are permitted and encouraged insofar as they are integral to the local or immediate community. Cluster development and conservation design principles are encouraged. And again, that was R1 Residential General. R2 is our Residential Waterfront District. The purpose of the district is to protect the water and shorelines of the county by providing for safe and orderly shoreline development. In this district, residential, recreational, conservancy uses are permitted as are a limited number of commercial uses that would be compatible with the residential character of the local or median area. Again, that's R2 Waterfront Residential. Residential Restricted. The purpose of this district is to allow for high-density residential development on non-conforming lots of record, providing that said lots were recorded prior to September 1, 1974. prior to September 1st, 1974, and lot sizes are generally shared by other property owners in the same vicinity. That was R3 Residential Restricted. R4 Residential Recreational. The purpose of this district is to allow for a wide range of open space, parks, and/or leisure, leisure time recreational activities and related uses in a medium-density residential development. We're almost done. We got B1 and M1 though. So the Business General District, B1. It is, A, it is the purpose of this district to promote light commercial expansion, development, and redevelopment in the existing business centers for mixed commercial and residential uses. And B, this district covers the area of the county intended for the conduct of general business to which the public requires direct and frequent access. This district is not characterized either by constant heavy trucking other than stocking and delivery of light retail goods or by any nuisance factors other than occasioned by incidental light and noise of congregation of people and passenger vehicles. That was B1 Business General. And the final district is Industrial Light. M1, the primary purpose of this district is to establish an area where the principal land is for light industrial operations, which are not ordinarily compatible with adjacent residential development. And again, that's Industrial Light District. And I also wanted to just put this up on screen, and I know you all that have your backs to us, can't see it, but just a quick snapshot to look at the zoning of the county. It's kind of hard to see it zoomed out, but let me see what I can do here. But as you can see, majority of the waterfront land is owned. R2, which is the brown around the outside. There are some small areas of waterfront that are agriculture up at the headwaters of the Great Wacomiko and above Dammer and Marsh. Then we have our conservation in the lower part of the northern neck on, on the bayside and Camp Kitty, of course, and some conservation up at the headwaters of the Cone. And then majority of the county is white, which is A1. And then we have pockets of R1, which is yellow here around some of the business centers in Reedville and Wacomiko Church. And then we have some B1 in Burgess. And it's just, you're zoomed out, it's kind of hard to see all the B1. But there are scattered B1 throughout the counties. But I just wanted to give you all a little, little view of the zoning to understand how much each district covers of the land in the county. And with that, we can start on page two of zoning usage table. If that's okay with you, Mr. Chairman.
That's fine.
Okay, so we, we went through the first, which goes from abattoir to bulk oil, gas, and bulk oil and gas storage commercial. So we'll start on the second page, which starts out with bus terminals. And I remember when I first moved here, I think they had one in Tappahannock. I think that's long since gone.
Bus terminal.
Yeah. I, I, well, I also from local knowledge know there was one in Warsaw at some point.
I remember one in Warsaw.
Where the nail, nail salon is, I think.
Right.
One in Burgess, I remember that one. Nobody else here remembers that one.
I remember.
You remember?
Yeah, I remember that.
There's one in Kilmarnick at the Rexall Drugstore.
Yeah, yeah.
We hit, we do have Bay Aging, which runs shuttles. And there, there are, there is a shelter at, next to the Calio Post Office that was instituted for pickup. And I, I just don't know what, how, how that program is going right now. But there is, Bay Aging does have a shuttle. I don't call it a bus service, more of a shuttle service. I think you call a number, and they, they say they'll come by and pick you up at such and such a time. But it's permitted in B1 and M1 right now. So, you know, I don't, I don't know if that's, if anyone thinks that needs to be changed or, or not. And Mr. Marston, if I'm correct reading this table, if there's no letter in the boxes, then it is not allowed use in that zoning district?
Right.
Okay. So it, bus terminals aren't allowed in majority of the districts except B1 and M1, and those are by right, which is a permitted use. Is everybody okay with that? Do we want to move on?
Thank God we got that done.
Well, you all tell me when you want to move forward. Okay, the next one is Business Small Retail Wholesale, less than 5,000 square feet of space under roof. It is a conditional use in A1, R2, R3, and a permitted use in B1.
In the interest of not dying of old age, could we perhaps do it by page? Ask people to review the usages and where it's permitted? And if anybody has any objections or comments, they can raise it at that time?
Yeah, if, if that's what you all would like to do.
I don't understand what you want. What do you want?
Instead of going by each item.
Page by page instead of line by line.
Okay. But the board asks us to review any and all uses in all zones. So that's why I was going line item by line. But whatever you all would like to do.
He's basically talking about biting it up and conquering rather than you going through each line.
I would, I really would not like to read them all, but if y'all would, if y'all have another way to go, we can, we can do that. I'm, I'm not trying to drag it out, I can tell you that.
Why don't we just look at page two and see if anybody has any questions or comments about any of them?
If that's what the chairman wants to do, then that's fine with me.
Yeah. How do you feel?
I agree.
I agree.
All right, let's go for it.
Stuart, of any of, any of these individual ones here, which ones, are there some that are more of a problem than others? I'm sure they are. I don't see the bus being a problem, but the rest of them, are any of them questionable?
Well, we get calls about cargo containers all the time. I, I should probably defer to Mr. Marston. He's, he's on the front lines. He talks to all the people that won't, well, who knows what they want. But basically, you know, I think that the cargo containers are something now. I, I, I don't know if we want to change anything, but that's, that's one thing. I would think that any use that may have external, externalities that could impact neighbors would be the ones you would want to look at. Like perhaps dry cleaners, I don't know. Or, well, that's, that's not even allowed, so I'm not sure why it's in the use hall. Oh, it's in business, okay.
I don't think we have any.
Right, we used to, but.
On cargo containers, Philip, what, what's the problem there? Is it allowed in agricultural and?
Because they are cheaper than sheds, and most of the time when they get settled in a parcel, that's where they stay until they rust out.
Okay. So it's an eyesore more than anything, right?
Correct.
But it's already set up for conditional use.
Yes. In that one zoning district, which is agricultural.
But it's not allowed.
What would you do to that to make it better?
I mean, if.
Eliminated or?
If they chose to, I mean, if you eliminate them altogether, you're still going to have the same problem that you have now. The only way to fix it would be is if they chose to allow them. And I don't necessarily see that either.
Okay.
Right now, it's only allowed in A1 with a conditional use permit and permitted in light industry.
Correct.
In residential, you shouldn't see storage containers.
Correct.
Okay.
The only one that jumps off the page to me is childcare centers. I'm just curious, all of those Cs, I assume those are in-home daycare centers?
Not necessarily.
Well, what else would they be that, I'm just asking?
Churches have them.
Yeah, churches.
Okay. So, but in church daycare centers then, in effect? Okay.
Well, you, like.
YMCA has.
Right.
Okay.
Boys and Girls Club.
Okay, that makes sense. Got it.
My question would be, why is it permitted in agriculture and conditional everywhere else?
I would guess it's because you've got migrant families who have to deal with the kids while their parents are out working. That'd be my guess. Anyone's got a better idea, I'm open.
Nothing jumps off the page as a logical explanation for that.
Best of page looks fine to me.
When we go to, did we do this, Stuart?
It wasn't that long ago.
All of the zoning usages? I don't, I don't recall going through them since I've been here.
We started going through them last year, but we didn't get there before.
I thought we touched on them a lot. About a few hours ago.
When the whole zoning ordinance was looked at.
2013.
What about flower shops not being allowed? We've got two of them in Wacomiko.
It's, 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 you gotta look, it says C Business Retail Wholesale. So you have to go over to the table, to the R's, and look on a retail business.
At the very top of the page, business. Basically, they're covered under the business. Which is the second and third one on that page.
All right. Any questions about page two?
Yeah, I still have a question about why you are permitted to have a childcare center in an agricultural zone when you're not permitted in any other? I mean, why wouldn't it be a conditional use permit across the board? Just for consistency's sake. I haven't heard a good reason why that should be permitted in an agricultural zone.
Conditional and, uh, commercial, is that right?
It's conditional, yeah, in residential, commercial, waterfront, business, light industry, but it's permitted by right in agriculture. And I don't understand.
The only thing I can think of is it's large, it's spread out, and there're not likely to be residences nearby. And I mean, I guess some people don't like screaming children in the playground, yelling and hooting and hollering, and you'd be further away from other residences. That's only going to think that the density is much lower in A1.
I guess, but would there be any other regulatory agency looking at a childcare center, or is this it?
Based upon the number of children, yes.
We're not the end of the road for that.
I would think they'd have to have a license.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's what I would be concerned about, that it just be permitted. But if there's other oversight, then I, you know, I'm okay with it, I guess.
Well, the state.
Just seems inconsistent.
Yeah, it's the state. I think the state takes care of a lot of that. Because they have to license you.
I would hope.
It's definitely big business.
Guessing it probably has got a historical basis to.
Yeah, and that, that's fine. I just look for consistency.
Boathouses, aren't they?
Okay, we want to move to page three.
All right. Are there any healthcare facilities in North Thumman now?
Yeah, there, there's a doctor's office next to the Rite Aid in Calio. VCU Health. I think not at Rite Aid, Walgreen, sorry.
I was thinking, okay. I was thinking of a different hospital, okay.
And then there's a dentist office in Calio, I think.
Yeah, physical therapy offices too in Burgess.
And in Calio.
And two, of course.
On Securys and Hesfield.
Okay. All right. Okay. We're still on page three. Anybody see anything that jumps off the page to you?
Yeah, the very bottom one, we've, we've had trouble with tents. A little trouble, we've had a lot of questions about tents and all, but they're permitted everywhere on this.
If you turn the page on the, it's, those are for three-day events. The next line on page four is four-day events, and it's conditional.
Okay, yeah.
Just a bad place to break the page.
All right, good. I need you right up on all this stuff.
She's teething, she's reading ahead.
Oh, nothing.
Okay, Stuart. Am I correct that there are only two motel hotels in North Thumman now?
One in Calio and Bay Motel, but there are bread and breakfasts. But they're, they're spread out.
Reedville.
Where, where do they come under?
Yeah, I was looking. Airbnb or?
They're under. They're under bed and breakfast. First page, tourist home, middle of the page, almost.
Uh huh, okay.
Page four and the toward the middle is some called a pro shop. I assume that's not just golf. That's sports, like, would that be like our use? That's their retail.
That was a targeted specific to, say, Ingle Creek's pro shop where they have the.
For golf course.
Yeah.
Primarily golf shop.
Right.
Roadside stands seems to have a lot of peas.
I think that's to help encourage sale of.
Pro's?
Yeah. Corn, tomatoes, and help the farmers make money with as easy as possible. And chime in, Mr. Marston, if you feel I'm.
No, you're correct.
Off, off base here.
I have a question about office buildings being permitted in residential areas and waterfront areas. I mean, I guess what defines an office building? And isn't that something we'd want to have a conditional use on if it was in a residential area or on the waterfront?
Good point.
Yeah, I'm not, I don't have the website.
Yeah.
Do you have this that's in front of you? You're going to read it to me.
Would that be like somebody that? Would that be like somebody that, an accountant that has their office in their home or something like that?
Yeah, that's, a room or group of rooms used for conducting the affairs of a business, profession, service industry, or government. So it's not an office building like Skyscreen.
This would be maybe office space.
Might make it.
Is there a separate definition for home office?
Home occupation, yes.
Big part, home occupation.
Yeah, we have that in...
Yeah, this looks like to me, it takes a step further. When it goes to office building, that sounds like to me, like some of the new ones that are being built around Kilmarnock, the audiology guy, he just built a new office building. And I think you're right, I think that needs to be conditional use permit in the R2 zone, certainly, maybe even R1.
Yeah, I mean, we have home occupation, which is permitted across the board.
Right.
I, I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, that's great.
And, and I, with that definition, I guess I don't really have a problem with it being permitted, but it's kind of, um, open for residential, in my opinion.
Uh-huh, uh-huh. I, I understand what you're saying.
Especially in R2.
On any residential, I mean, you know...
Yeah, there's not, I mean, there's not a lot of, I mean, they go into the building and then they do their business and they leave, and they might go out for lunch, and the cars go out, but, I mean, it, it's sort of self-contained, and there's not really any noise or anything associated with that, but...
Well, the definition doesn't say that, though.
Right.
I guess that's, if the definition maybe was more specific to size of the building, or, you know, the fact that it was a, I mean, we cover home occupations, and, and so I can see that being in a residential area, and not having a lot of traffic, and not having a lot of noise factor. Office buildings just brings a different picture.
Yeah, I think it takes a step up. I think a conditional use permit would be appropriate for that.
At least for R1 and R2.
R1 and R2.
Patrick, when you had your office downtown in Heesville, what was it on, do you remember?
No, I think, but I think that area is a very wide open zone. So, I have no idea what it was on.
There've been law offices in Heesville for a long time.
And they're building a new one.
So what do you think, Mr. Chairman? How would we, can we put that up for a motion or for a discussion?
Let's discuss it first.
Okay.
Okay. Because I understand what, what, I understand what Haly was saying, but you gotta understand that none of these, do these, none of these require any type of business license, right?
County doesn't have a business.
County doesn't have.
Okay, so, and, and because the county doesn't have a business license, you know, I think we're just cut, doing a broad sweep here, just covering as much as we can, rather than, um, I think when you start limiting things, you start getting yourself into trouble, so, you know. But, um, let's just discuss it.
Sometimes limitations are prudent. Like in a residential waterfront area.
Right, right.
Mr. Marston, when, when was the last time you had, we had an office building? I mean, it doesn't come up too often.
Not, not as long as I've been, been in the county.
Well, you got an office complex on Route 200 in Burgess, that's strictly an office complex, they were on the right-hand side.
That's probably in a business section, not a residential section.
I'm not sure. You talking about southern states? Mm-mm. On the right-hand side, just after you, or before you get to nuisance, on the right hand, there's a, an office complex with three separate, or four separate offices in there, so. You got an attorney and some other folks in there now. Right, right.
But maybe we separate these out with one being multi-tenant and one being non-multi-tenant. That, that would be a multi-tenant thing, and clearly, that, we don't want that in R2, but it's just the...
It would make no economic sense to put one in R2.
But it's allowed under this vague definition.
If anybody wants to pay for water, pardon me? It's also been there for 200 years.
We had one when I was on the planning commission. Came up in an R2 business.
Uh-huh.
He bought a piece of property in R1 and built his office building there.
So it has come up in the past.
Yeah, it's, it's come up, and, um... What do you think, John?
Well, I think, just to simplify it a little bit, we need to separate the categories here. First of all, we're talking a multi-tenant office building, that should be a separate animal. Now, is that covered somewhere in here, Philip? Multi-tenant office buildings?
It's not, it's covered under this.
Okay, so then that's first point.
If we change the definition of office building, that'll solve the problem. Except it, I, I don't want it to be permitted in R1 and R2.
No, I agree.
I don't want it to be conditional in R1.
But I think if we separate multi-tenant from...
From home occupation.
Exactly, then, then we get a long way towards the right answer, because I think we're all concerned about an office building, per se, showing up, as opposed to just somebody's, they're running, you know, a small thing out of their home.
Well, I think that it's already defined, that, it's already separate definition, office building, home occupation, it's already separated.
Oh, if that's the case, then, then this, these should not be Ps, they should be Cs.
That's exactly what I'm saying. Which page you want to change? Three or four? It's page four. Office buildings.
Third from the top.
Should we add more definition to that, so they know the difference between? What we're saying is just make it a conditional use permit in R1, R2. R1, R2.
Yeah.
But...
Leave it permitted in the business section.
Do you want to put one tenant, or?
Well, if we're to do, if we're to change it to conditional, we probably don't need to. Just, just make them conditional permit, and we're, you should be fine.
Then the board can determine if it's appropriate or not.
I mean, home occupation's permitted across the board.
Right.
With no conditional use at all. So, we don't need to change that, and that will give people the freedom to operate their business out of their home.
Oh, so maybe what we're getting at here is office buildings that are not owner-occupied.
Like a doctor's office, a dentist's office, I mean, it could include all types of offices.
I don't see how the single or multi-tenant affects the usage, as...
So we really just need to focus on making these conditional for R1 and R2.
If that's what you all would like.
Asking if we can discuss it.
So, yeah, we can, we can discuss it. But again, you have a doctor's office, and it's in his home.
Not necessarily. Look at all the doctor's offices in Burgess.
Right.
Doctor Neil had one right down the street there.
Right down the street.
And, and that's okay, because it's in the right place, but in an R2 residential waterfront district, I'm not so sure that would be good. You got a lot of traffic issues and other things that you have to consider.
Well, an office building, I would think, would want to have good access and be in an area where it's not off the beaten track, and...
You would think so.
All your definition doesn't say that.
All your R2. I'm talking about logical places to put an office building. End of a dead-end road, probably not the best place for an office building. Could they, could it happen, maybe, possibly?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna move that, under office buildings, that we change the designation for R1 and R2 to conditional.
I'll second that.
Okay, now we're, now we're off of the discussion, the specific thing now. All right, any questions?
No, but in further discussion, under home, under home occupation, we also have home professional offices, which are permitted across the board. That's your doctor and your dentist operating in their home.
Or an accountant, or an attorney, or anything.
So, to me, that's another reason to make office building conditional in R1 and R2. I rest my case.
Okay, you made the motion.
It was seconded.
I've seconded it.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Uh, I don't mind.
Anybody oppose? All right. Good call, I. Okay. Still on page four? Anybody see anything? With the onslaught of, um, food trucks, is this a good time to look at that? Wherever that fall?
Food truck.
What are food trucks?
Food trucks.
It's not a separate category, I don't think.
No, it's not even...
It's not addressed.
It's not addressed, so...
It is interpreted, certainly, that, that if they stay in a permanent fixed location, then it's classified as a restaurant. But if it is temporary and, and moves with the flow of people, then it is allowed.
Okay.
You gotta keep moving.
You think that's worth discussing? It's here, it's a viable enterprise. At the Board of Supervisors meeting this past week, uh, the issue of the food trucks, there's been a request to allow three food trucks to occupy the parking lot at the old Education Building in Lottsburg. It was not resolved, I suggested to Mr. Fisher and Mr. Haney that it be shipped to us for consideration, I don't think that's materialized, I don't have a view for anything about that, Stuart, but...
No, sure.
So, it, it's, it's gonna be on the plate one way or another, somewhere.
Well, and plus, they were talking about property that they own.
Right.
So, you know, you go through Wycomico any day, and you see trucks sitting there, they can either be moved or not moved, but it is a growing industry, which I think should, which I think should be imperative.
If there's one there right now that's been there for a week, but it doesn't operate, it's just there. I think he's having some propane work done. You know, he's right there at, at the propane shop. Because I asked the postmistress, and she said it's never open, it's just been sitting there.
Well, I think in answer to your question, Mr. Chairman, I think it should be on the list, and we should give it due consideration in terms of how it should be handled, as we recommend to the board.
But you're not recommending any, it's not on any real estate, per se.
It's not based on zoning, that's correct. Now, it would be, if, if you have a mobile vehicle, if it parks itself on a public, uh, in a government space, that's one thing, if it parks it on somebody's residential, you know, if they park it on an R2, that's a completely different matter. So it, it, it isn't a matter of how the vehicle is, is licensed or whatever at that point, is where is it sitting? Is it allowed to be there under the zoning permit, uh, zoning...
Or does it have permission from the landlord?
Right, that's what I'm saying, if it has permission, then it's not our business anyway.
I would think that would be a prerequisite.
Yeah, I mean, normally, most people wouldn't park in places they hadn't had permission to.
Well, no, I'm not making the assumption that they would be, but let's suppose we have two side-by-side adjacent R2 properties on the waterfront, and somebody gives permission for that food truck to be on their property, but the person next door is terribly thrilled about that thing. It sounds like under those, I mean, I think food truck on an R1 or R2 should be conditional.
Hmm.
One man's opinion.
And R3.
There's not a large percentage of the population transit in R2 properties. What I'm saying is that they're gonna be in the, where the main highways are, because they're not gonna get enough business.
It's gonna depend on drive-by traffic.
At the end of the, end of the road, unless you have boat traffic, enough boat traffic, maybe next to the jetty, or something like that, but...
Well, since it's really not a major problem right now.
Or is it likely to become? Have you had any complaints at all about food trucks?
From, from those that operate restaurants, yes.
Naturally. Naturally.
The competitive complaints, yeah. Has Charlesie called yet? Gosh, what, why are they concerned?
They're taking business from them, where they are in permanent fixed location that's invested in the county while this is...
That they're paying taxes on.
Right.
Right.
Charles?
I don't know. I don't know how much this is gonna grow, it seems to be something that's going along pretty good now, but, uh, I don't know how the, how they're gonna make out. It may not be a problem.
Yeah, I, I kind of agree, I just don't like, you make a problem for yourself. I think you're doing a great job with it now. I think you're doing fine.
You don't think we need a category for food trucks?
Um, you will eventually, but not right now, I don't think. You gotta see where it's going.
Find out where the problems are.
Yeah, well, these are entrepreneurs, and, and they, they found a click, a niche, and, um, whereas you can't come so far with your building, you know, they can go wherever, you know, wherever they want, so... My question was county revenue, but so...
Yeah, I would, I wouldn't want to hurt them, uh, at this point. If they get to be an issue, we can deal with that, but, uh, I don't know.
Well, you know...
Do they pay sales taxes, like a restaurant?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so just leave it alone then, okay?
It was bad.
No, it's not broke, I'm just saying, though, it, it's not broke, so...
Let me pose one hypothetical here, we got these three proposed food trucks at the Board of the Education Building. What if Allison's let them on their parking lot, for whatever reason, retail zone, and it's just across the street from Signet's and Delma's in Lottsburg?
And they do allow food trucks in there occasionally, I think.
Where?
On Allison's.
They used to have the Barnes seafood truck.
Uh-huh. Oh, really, okay.
For a few months.
Nina parked his, uh, truck down at, uh, Jets Hardware. And I think it's a win-win for everybody there.
Yeah.
They have to get permission from Jets to do it, so...
But in all cases now, we're talking about, uh, B1 property.
For the most part, I mean, they're not in residential.
Right. See, I mean, that's the only concern I would have, I mean, you know, if a person has a waterfront property, next-door neighbor's having a big barbecue or something, and they invited a food truck and invited all the neighbors to come by, I'm not sure I'm thrilled about it, it ain't gonna happen, that's not, but...
I mean, it could for an event, but that's a one-day, that's a two-hour event, I can't see that that's gonna be a deal-breaker, I mean, if somebody's having a wedding at their house, and they're having a food truck, I, I, I can't imagine, for a short, very short window like that, that anybody would have a problem, especially if there's a wedding, I mean, everybody should be happy.
Okay. Okay, sorry I brought it up, okay?
It's your fault, it's your fault.
Okay, all right, give me more on to page five.
Vacation rental home, uh, vacation home rental. I think we need to change R3 to conditional use, isn't that what we... Okay, well, I must have an old sheet then, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
I got it.
So, P except for rent.
I got whatever was sent to me, but anyway, good, I'm glad you...
For some reason, other than R3, well, this is a permitted use. Yeah, that's what I see. Yeah, so, we just changed the R3.
Yeah, we just, we just fixed it, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
So I just had an old chart, so that's all I had.
Okay.
Yeah, I noticed the one from last October was 2018, so the, the new one is right here, I'll get you a copy of it.
That's okay, I, I trust you, I don't need a copy.
I need one.
Okay.
Yeah, I told Phil, I was like, I noticed, uh, one we were looking at was a few years ago.
He's bringing one down.
Make sure you got the right year.
Thank you. All right.
If you look at the bottom of the page, it says May 2023, the last time it was updated. Thank you.
And, and, oh, I'm sorry, did? Anything else on five? Anything else on five, page five?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have one that I'd like to bring up.
Okay.
Um, it's just below the middle, two private, non-commercial piers on the same parcel. We have lots of waterfront properties that are on two different bodies of water. Like, might be on the Potomac River on one side, Paul Creek on the other side. Uh, and I have lots of folks that are interested in, may already have a pier on the Potomac, but they want one on the backside as well. But it's conditional use permit.
Conditional use, right. It's conditional use.
On a piece of property, VMRC says you can only have one pier on a parcel.
Really? Conditional use?
So, I can get a conditional use, but VMRC won't allow it? So, I think.
Okay.
Somebody look it up, but I think that's what it is.
I, I, I did one across the river, and he was on a rappahannock in Huntington Creek. And so, he's got a pier on a rappahannock, and I applied for a pier on the backside on Huntington Creek, and that was approved. Two piers on one property.
Yeah, I don't know.
In Lancaster?
Pardon me?
Was that in Lancaster?
Nittlesworth.
Nittlesworth.
I've taken some to the Board of Supervisors that have been approved.
They might not be looking hard enough, and that's okay.
I can't guarantee they were approved by VMRC, but they, they went through the steps of the county.
What, you have to subdivide your properties so you have a second pier?
Now, is it so that there are places where there's two properties in one dock?
Joint?
Yeah.
Right on the property line.
Right.
That joint ownership is fairly common.
Is that zoned in here separate from anywhere else, or...
That is allowed, if it's put on the property line. Uh, there are some restrictions that go along with it. In most cases, they don't, they end up being changed, because ownership changes, and eventually, they don't get along.
Right.
Which becomes a problem, but they are still allowed if, if they're put on the property line, and they meet the square footage requirements.
I go down to Fleaton Point, there's one, one pier that goes out, and probably got 10 sets of davits there, where each homeowner somewhere around Fleaton, uh, has one of those. And, uh, I don't know how that's, uh, the ownership is on that.
There, there's another provision for community piers.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Where, where you can put in one with multiple slips. You do have to be careful with that, though, because VMRC does regulate that close, to where if you go to put in your own...
Right.
You have to declassify that community pier.
Anything else on five? Page five. Okay. Stuart?
Well, that, that concludes that, so, um, the review of the zoning uses table. Phillip, I guess what, the course of action would be, would be for the Planning Commission to make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors, that we should change office buildings to conditional use in residential. I mean, that would be the course of action. We, we would not just go ahead and start doing this. We'd have to ask the board...
Oh, absolutely.
For permission to this.
We would have to, we'd have to make a motion and to send it to the board.
I make a motion that we change the, uh, the permitting requirements for office, space, office buildings for resident, R1 and R2 to conditional.
Got it. Motion made in a second. Any questions? All in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? All right, we'll send that to the board. Stuart, so...
Yes, sir.
Get their thoughts on it, okay?
That, that's, that's all we have for tonight.
Wow.
How about the boathouse thing?
How about the boathouse? Yes, that will be, that will be advertised, I will advertise it for the March Board Supervisors meeting.
Is there no discussion on it?
Well, we did.
We already did that. That was the first thing in...
I thought we talked about the boat canopies, but we didn't talk about the restrictions on boathouses.
No, they, these were changes to exempt canopies from these restrictions, and we approved that.
I'm sorry, excuse me.
I have one question, too, before we... Are we, as a planning commission, going to ask the Board of Supervisors to weigh in on the general assemblies, getting involved in solar energy and taking away the powers of the localities?
Remember that coalition, right?
Right.
Right, and, and I, I've been receiving the emails, and the way I read the emails, it said facilities over 50 megawatts. And I, I could be mistaken, but that's what I read, that it was any facilities over 50 megawatts that you cannot, that the county cannot limit.
Does anybody have any idea what the history of this proposal is, and where it came from, who's pushing it? Or is it just...
Yeah, I mean, I've, I've, I've got all the information. If you'd like, we'd forward it to you.
How about a sentence? Where's it coming from, and who's pushing it?
Sir, I don't have that, uh, information in, in my brain.
Yeah, stand there.
Just a moment.
Well, just mechanically, it's pretty much impossible to do that.
Because it's still in committee, right? So, subcommittee.
Well, VACO is, is, is involved with that, and the, the Board of Supervisor speaks for the county. The Planning Commission is a recommending body. If y'all want to recommend the board do something that, but I'm pretty sure they're plugged in.
They are aware of it, and they are reacting.
That all Board Supervisors get copied on every email that, that has been reported on, and so they are 100% aware of what's going on.
And they are weighing in.
Yeah, and that's starting to affect the planning commission.
We don't speak for the county, the Board of Supervi... As a board, we could not do that.
No, okay. Please don't.
I have a question.
Okay, that, that clarifies it.
Yeah, that, that takes care of it.
Are we missing a representative from the Board of Supervisors by accident, or is that just gonna be...
No, I think he's just not here tonight.
Is that still gonna be Richard?
No, it's gonna...
Oh, Jared, did they switch?
I thought it was gonna be Al.
Oh, Albert?
Yeah, but I'm not sure.
He said he was going to be the liaison to the...
Okay, may...
Multi-county Planning Commission.
Yeah, maybe he's...
And on my understanding of it, it was gonna be Richard.
Yeah, sure.
Sure.
Okay, just curious.
Very busy folks. Is there anything, Stuart, do we have a Board of Supervisors report?
Yes, sir. There was a, uh, public hearing on, on conditional use for an abattoir at Delano Store. Uh, this is the same fellow that, uh, had petitioned the board for a conditional use, uh, at, at another location, uh, in the county. Mr. Marston attended it. Uh, he may have more details, but they, they denied that, uh, request for a, a slaughterhouse at Delano Store.
Okay, anything to add to that?
I, I don't think so. I mean, it, there was, there was a lot of people at the public hearing.
Yes.
And, and I think there were some slight limitations that, that the board based their decision on, um, with this parcel. But, but they definitely wanted to work with the applicant in trying to find a measurable location.
Yeah, any, any questions? I didn't realize we had such a large sheep farming enterprise in the county. Well, the fellow that was here was, had more than a few.
Yeah, believe it or not, the, the, the one that was here from Lancaster was, I think he said he was the largest sheep farmer east of the Blue Ridge.
Yeah.
Well, then we should put it next to her property in Lancaster.
It was pretty close to him, so...
Well, I think it's sad that our farmers have to make a reservation an hour, a year ahead, and take their cattle to Pennsylvania, or Faukeer County. I mean, we are trying to, we talked at our meeting in January about supporting the farming and the aquaculture industry, so hopefully, this gentleman can find a place that won't be on the main drag, I guess. It sounds to me like it's something our farmers need.
How about the guy in Meskimen? I mean, I take care of the processing.
I'm sorry?
Is that the same guy that has the one already over in Meskimen?
No.
Does he just process?
He applied for this same operation down Fruit Plain Road.
Down where?
Fruit Plain.
Okay.
And he was denied there as well.
Wow. Same person?
Same person.
Oh, I thought it was a different applicant.
It's, it's separate from the other one that sits in Meskimen.
Okay.
But they don't do any, they don't, they're not set up for the scale that this guy was trying to do?
Right, he had a larger operation, could get more done. And being the only one in the region that could do that many, it would be a, you know, a draw for the county. But it doesn't look nice.
Delano Store is kind of public. I mean, it just sits right out there like a sore thumb.
I barely look at it when I go by.
Come on, man. The guy that bought that's cleaned that place up?
Yes, he has.
He's done a really good job there.
Yes, he has.
He had a food truck there for a while.
Yeah. Anything else, Stuart?
No, sir.
What was your amendment?
I move we adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Fine, good night, and thanks, everybody. Please encourage your friends and neighbors. If they don't say anything, we'll wait until they get done.
I don't have your friends on me.
Stuart?
Yes, sir. You will take that to your...